All right, we are calling to order the City of Parks work session for the Parks Commission. It is a little after four, four ten, but we are up and operational, so we'll apply to follow regulations. We're gonna dive right in here and we'll start with a roll call. We'll start with Jennifer down on the end and go all the way around. Jennifer Morrison, City of Tuesday.
Great, how was City Tuesday?
Christina Texters, City Tuesday.
All right, Kurt Hammer, Parks Commission, Jamie Faraday, Parks Commission.
Arian Lyons, Parks Commission.
I mean Matthews, Parks Commission.
Kai Scott, Parks Commission.
Coco Sigh, Parks Commission.
Bill Davis is absent, excused. Yeah, let's keep going, why not? Cricket Souls, Marshfield Pioneer Cemetery. Anya Dins, City of Tuesday.
Mike Powder, civilian.
Maseen Ladi, civilian.
Dr. Prashir, civilian.
Perfect. Thank you so much for coming in today. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Shereen.
Uh, well, let's just roll down the line, so we'll start with Coco. Cricket, or cricket, cricket, sorry. I thought I said a word, the word popped into my brain.
I, I really appreciate all of your goal setting you're doing. And sometimes we've been in Orphan Park, it took, took us a while to be not at Orphan Park. And we, we hadn't received permission in the last couple of years to continue on with grants and things. So I'm just a little concerned that it's not with the, any, any of the goal setting. And then we'll be really cognizant of not including the, you know, cabin grants or things like that. And generally Becky is our grant writer, so we're not in need of pristine services. And for whatever reason, because it was before the department split, Chelsea Schnabel takes care of facilitating our grants from that thing. So I'm really concerned, we wanna continue, we've just completed phase two point five now, ready to start three point zero. We have all the funding in place for that. And one of my goals is to start sort of alumni funding, maybe get a little guilt money from those kids at Marshfield over the years. And I don't wanna compete with what Coco may do. So I just would like to see things that we will carry on to maybe be recognized as goals to get done in the next two years. So we're, you know, cause we do have to bring all that stuff to the city council. And I would like to say, as usual, Dave Crandall sets his calendar by when we need him and he takes care of everything. And everything that is ready and is needed for the Fourth of July, so we really appreciate the job he gives to things.
Thank you so much, Kurt. And I think speaking, you know, seeing where the cemetery, of course, is, is definitely a priority. Uh, we were looking at some of the other big dig dig items, partly it's because you do so well and take such good care of it.
And then that's, you don't need to do anything, but maybe it does need to be part of the list.
I agree, I think it does need to be recognized.
And, and of course, everyone is welcome to come to the, the heritage permission will be meeting here. And Steve Dreyf and I are putting a tour together for them. And they may be up at the cemeteries that Sunday morning. But on, on July twenty third at six, they are presenting the heritage, um, uh, All-Star Heritage Award to the city. And so it's nice to have people show up and recognize what, what was done with everyone working very hard to get this together, to recognize that.
Thank you so much, that's pretty awesome. I'm, I'm just gonna call to note that Bev is online, uh, with us, so that, um, she is for attendance. All right, we're gonna move on over and go ahead.
Me, Mike.
Mike.
Um, is it, did Eric get on here or is Eric still?
He sent, he emailed.
Oh, yeah, okay.
No.
No, he's not, okay. Um, I know Eric, Eric, we've been in, in touch a lot on the, on the Cheryl, very interested in seeing that. Come along as fast and furious as we can see it come. And it's good to see that there is more involvement. Um, last I heard, he's, he's pretty happy that things are starting to rock and roll on it. Which I, which I think is gonna be great, you know, once started, be super. Um, but there's gonna be a lot more stuff going on. I know we're making the plan and it's gonna be nice to get the more bike and pedestrian and human infrastructure going as we can. Um, and also I wonder, there are plenty of people around that we can muster up volunteers, so a lot of, a lot of the, there'd be a lot of volunteers that wanna get some of their stuff happening. I'm talking to people all the time and they say, sign me up, sign me up. And I'm just a nobody, really. Um, but you know, I'm still interested in one-on-one, you know, getting the speed down, getting that some painted bike gutter. And you know, where they covered it, you know, they got flattened out, it really needs to put back in. Because it's really confusing to a lot of people. And, um, and incidentally, you know, a good education might be coming onto as a type of bike lanes. The bike lanes we have here, even the painted, painted gutters, we've got on one-on-one, the painted gutters down hour ago are dismal. Um, and it was on that, um, if you ride down them, which I do, and I stopped doing that, I pretty much top the pavement now. You, you're only inches away from vehicles, many times they're doing thirty-five to forty-five. Trucks are bigger today, you know, they're higher up today, so it's a whole changed atmosphere with vehicles out there. But, um, we do need to definitely work on, you know, it'd be nice if we could get a bike route all the way to Charleston, Down Ocean Boulevard, all the way to town. Um, it, a long hour ago, we have, um, I don't know if anybody's seen it, but we have the, the campsite there, what's it called? Baypoint Landing?
Yeah.
Go to Durham Magazine, it made number four as top US campsites, which is great. And on the red page, you see an RV with the bikes on the back of it.
Yeah.
But I challenge anybody to take a bike out of that place. And go anywhere, you know, so, um, I think we can really do better. Uh, we're missing the boat. We want tourists, we wanna, you know, we wanna put people on the streets, um, you know, we, we need to stop making the infrastructure for it. I was down in Banden yesterday, came back from the mountain. We camped for a few days down on the Rogue River, which is fabulous, came back through Banden and pulled down to town. I mean, the sidewalks down by the waterfront, the sidewalks are bustling, they got three restaurants along there, it's just bustling. When I get to Empire, there's not a soul in sight, maybe one or two tweakers, um, and it's just dead. You know, so we, there, there's, you know, we've got the canvas, we just gotta learn how to paint it.
I agree with you, Mike, and I think that's part of our discussion, um, later on in the agenda today, so.
Sounds good, so that's all me for now.
Okay, I appreciate you. Dean?
Um, uh, my name's Dean Lundy. Uh, my, my, uh, history with the public safety is over thirty years with San Francisco Fire. And thirty years ago, uh, we, uh, we actually changed San Francisco and it was really difficult. Uh, but we bikelaned from downtown, we took down a freeway, we did it all thirty years ago. Uh, as I've told some people, the, the bike thing is very important to me, but it's, it's a rope-a-dope deal for me. My thing is a youth program, a marine youth program. I'm trying to put together an aquatic park on the waterfront across from the, uh, New Planet Fitness. There have been three almost horrendous wrecks coming around that corner at the New Planet Fitness, uh, 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 Plaza. It's just, ODOT said, well, we go by fatalities, it's just a matter of time. One-on-one is too fast and there are no strikes there. I'm, I'm all for this Cheryl road, the way that, that Eric Clough laid it out. He drives it, he rides it every day back and forth. It has to be on one side, back and forth. I've talked to, um, Glenn Peterson, Steve Silva, and all the people, uh, uh, Sanger, everybody up at ODOT. And it's all a normal, this is a normal, it was, the city has spent tons of money on architectural plans. Like, this is a work session, but at the next actual vote section, I would like to see this adopted and put out to bid on that, on that Cheryl thing. Um, my thing with the bike path is connect the boardwalk that they tried to do in two thousand seventeen. And Mike Powder here and I found the plan that North Bend actually did on their stretch and it dumps into the Indian Casino. So we're working on the, 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 that old warehouse or spot. We are going to, in the next, I hope, and some of our, our, um, uh, volunteers. We got the city to, to print out these, these maps along the waterfront and we're gonna start riding them with ODOT. We've shamed them to four, they've, they've come down. This guy John Lozur, they came down and, and you know, with their fancy, you know, stuff, and they come down. Well, we've leaned on them enough that we've got them where we want them. And I don't wanna give up the, the pressure. There are several things in this city that are really noble projects. So Coco's, uh, law cabin there, that's part of my C scout thing, I'll help. And anything you guys need a hand with, I'll help. But the, but the bike path, the Cheryl thing is an easy deal. All we have to do is, is, is lean on ODOT to do it. Uh, it's a normal, it's a normal pattern. Uh, we have several striping outfits. Look, look at the, look at the, the parking lot out here. Whoever did this one, they could do it, right there, the brand new stripes. When it's dark and rainy here, see, I'm not from here, I've only been here a couple, three years. And it's rainy and dark outside here, I don't even know what streets are one-way and stuff. We gotta brighten up our city. Reed Sport used to look like an armpit. I mean, I wouldn't even stop. And with one, they ground off the old lines and remeasured stuff, I met the guy's measuring, it's easy to done. They've restriked Reed Sport and it looks like a million bucks.
Dean, I appreciate you, but because we started late.
Cheryl, Cheryl is, is, is my, I'm up for Cheryl.
And then as you're working with ODOT and you're getting feedback from them, I'm just.
Well, the public shouldn't have to work with them, we should, we should, we should get them on, on the job.
I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
And we got Scott.
Um, I didn't really plan on talking tonight, but, uh, I'm very interested in bike safety. Um, I occasionally ride my bike from East Side to the Bay Area Hospital and it's, it's dangerous. This is not a bike-friendly town. There is not bike-friendly commuters passing you. Um, I just recently purchased a radar for the back of my bike. Uh, the guy at Mo's talk, told me about a very cool little device. Um, it lets you know on your phone, the app, when cars are coming and it tells you about two blocks away. So it's, it's really the best thing, sense of helmet, I think, but, um, but any way to improve bike safety in town, I, I'm all for it. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna roll right into our work session. So, um, work session A is goal setting and two-year plan. Um, I'm gonna open the floor up, uh, for discussion with commissioners, or Greg, if you wanna dive in.
Um, well, it's, uh, at the, uh, June twentieth, twenty twenty-four Parks Commission meeting staff presented the goal that we developed by the commission. At the June sixth, twenty twenty-four work session, during discussion, the commission requested that the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four work session be get, uh, be dedicated to furthering that discussion of the two-year goal-setting plan for more in-depth conversation. Furthermore, commissioners wanted to understand the impacts to access habitability, timeframes, costs, and information regarding available funding. Staff will present these findings for each of the projects below at the work session. While as anticipated, the commission will present additional projects or goals. Their consideration for the two-year plan below is a list of current ongoing projects that the city staff is working on. So they're all listed here, these are the five projects. Um, there's byproduct staff that's currently working on, uh, and then, uh, I had an opportunity to run through and, uh, kind of, almost five project, the staff is working on, I went through and kind of put together what the budget was for each one of those five projects. Timeframes of which you were, uh, or what you're scheduled for and, uh, how it impacts. And I can go through each one of those if you'd like. Um, or I can forward this email to you, uh, later on, um, but I do have those for you. Or if anybody would like to ask a specific one, I can do that.
I have sharpings, if you guys want me to capture any notes.
Yes, on, you're in progress, I believe that you're most furthest along, if I'm not incorrect, is the Mingus Park Restrooms, is that correct?
That project we are, um, that, that project we are going, uh, for a presentation to the LGDP on the twentieth, or the twenty-second, I'm sorry, uh, for that, for that grant.
Okay. And then the second one that's furthest along would be what, on this?
Well, the first one that's furthest along isn't in the front street, I mean, how are we measuring it, measuring it?
Well, I'm measuring that you have the funds and it's got at least to the RFP or something like that.
So I think the, the one that's furthest along is probably the, 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 uh, the Front Street, uh, project. Though and there, we have the design, we have thirty percent design for that, um, already. We have the blueprint, it's, it's laid out, we have thirty percent design for that.
The RV community pass grant helping is coming up here just around the corner.
So the fourth item down in progress is the closest to getting.
So are you waiting on final design, you're waiting for funding?
Need funding.
Need funding, create the final design.
Yeah.
So you have conceptual, you just don't have.
For the North Capitol Front Street from the Dater Cedar all the way to the museum.
Okay, so that, when the fourth one down and says free, whatever, that would be the, for the, the one that you would know in the next month that you could go out for an RFP.
Yes, I believe it opens up in August.
Okay. Okay. And then the next one would be the top one, would that be correct?
The Dufft Parks?
The Mingus Park restroom.
The Mingus Park restroom.
There it is.
Where are we?
On the end.
She's on the, she's on.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I was looking at this for a second.
Yeah, because I thought when you sent this out that we wanted, people wanted to revisit.
Hang these up if you'd like, if we can.
And so I was just saying that if you have things that you already have, like this one that you sent, it has, you know, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars next to this one, that's the Mingus Park restroom.
Everybody see this, okay?
Yeah. And then down at, um, the Mingus Park Community Hall, there's some numbers there. Because we were talking about what items already have some planning or in progress with funding. So I just thought it might be helpful, since that was the question that was brought up last time, that brings us to where we are today, if I understand that thing, was in the progress, by, let's say, November, how many of these things will you know yes or no if you'd have funding?
Okay.
Did you wanna go through, you wanna go through?
Well, yeah.
Okay, so we got Mingus Park Restrooms. Um, we have received, and Christina, I welcome you to jump in. Um, we've received two grants. Um, actually, excuse me, we received three grants. Um, for Family Foundation, twenty-five thousand, Mingus or Morgan Grant, um, forty thousand, and Oak, Oakwill, CoCoil, maybe five.
Five.
That was the Scott Hammond. Okay, so then we've only received, um, the twenty-five and the forty.
No, twenty-five is also Scott Hammond.
Okay. So we only received forty thousand dollars, sorry about that.
And then, and that's earmarked specifically for restaurants.
It is, yes. Now, we also have, um, a letter of intent to Morgan for this grant cycle for a hundred thousand dollars, ask for the restrooms. Because the local government grant program for the, the big one that we're going for, for the, uh, Mingus Park Restrooms is a forty percent match, and that's where that two hundred and twenty-eight comes in. Okay, we have to find two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to their sixty percent of it, which is in the three fifty range. Um, and so we've got some dedicated capital funds. Um, but there's only a limited source of capital funds and there's no way to replenish those, so we're trying to stack grants.
So what was approved in the council budget for this fiscal year for capital funds for?
So the, the whole dollar amounts there, it's just there's nothing, um.
Nothing, nothing's allocated. So we have a pot of money and we're gonna try to match it as well as we can.
That's, that's what we are trying to do.
Okay. And, and how much is that line item?
It's a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred K, and that's for capital improvements in parks.
For every period, yeah.
Yep, just parks for all in general.
What do you mean all in general, the parks asset?
I, is it just parks assets?
Just park assets.
And I asked that because we, we have had some, not this, but over the years, we've had monies allocated to park capital projects that somehow disappeared and go into other things.
But it could also go into a road or a sidewalk repair that's in.
It's associated with the park.
Yeah.
Or trail, like asphalt, trails, yes.
Allocated for park-related.
Yes, sorry, I don't have any knowledge of it.
Yeah.
And others, I'm saying the streets.
Four hundred K, that's all we have, okay.
All right, we all make it, you got, you have money to.
Yeah.
However, you got, you don't have any other reserves, so if you end up with,
Yeah.
somebody touching Mingus Park and getting shocked, because the aerators start leaking electrical, because they're not working, you're gonna have to.
Let's not give anybody any ideas.
Well, that's, or that would be an insurance thing, and we'd be capital.
Your, your deposit would be. So then Front Street to Mingus Cheryl, is two date, we spent, um, how much on planning?
Um.
Um, yeah. So, so my question on the Front Street, Front Street and then the, the Sheriff's Project, are all the, the capital allocation funds for that coming from our line item? Because it's mostly streets.
Yeah. So Front Street to Mingus Cheryl, I am not the decision-maker on this, but I would propose taking that from the bike and ped line item. One percent of, um, gas tax goes specifically bike and ped. But guys, that's, this last year was thirteen hundred, thirteen, thirteen thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Not very much.
So I, I.
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand. So just so you know on a bigger level, and I don't wanna go down this path too much, because we're running out of time. We get that that's not sustainable and the state of Oregon gets that. And right now, the Lincoln Oregon Cities is lobbying to change the whole gas tax, it's with electric cars, everything needs to be revamped. But that's the situation we're in and it takes several years to change that.
So, sorry. No, 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 I think this is all helpful information. I think a part of it is, is, you know, it is, it's kind of a morpheous budget. And in, in, it's, there's line items and, and we, because we're part of all of this stuff, know that this item has to go for this and this item has to go for that. Versus, you know, the general public doesn't understand. So I think it's, it's pertinent to have those.
So the bike and ped line item only has a little over a hundred thousand dollars in it. To date, we have spent, how much we planning? Do you have that number? If you don't?
For the Front Street?
No, for the Mingus Cheryl's.
Okay.
Okay, it's, it's not a lot of money. And I, I, we are working with the consultant for your guys' request to get, um, um, money for final design. I said it was probably gonna be around twenty-five thousand dollars, I think it would be there. But with the consultant, when we, when we showed him the alternative that you folks, um, chose last, last, um, commission meeting, she says, okay, well, that's also gonna require a signal modification. So that was not in like twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be additional approximately twenty-five K, so you're talking fifty thousand dollars just to get to design.
Okay.
So.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's the numbers I'm wanting us to get.
And I don't have construction numbers for you for that.
Estimate of where we are.
Construction is pretty fluid and honestly, construction will be next year, so.
Yeah.
Add another eighteen percent.
So before I move on to the Mingus Park Community Hall, any more questions about Front Street to Mingus Cheryl's?
Uh, last time I met with Eric, we went through that route and the double direction, omnidirectional bike lane thing.
Mm-hmm.
I, I know that's an option, but we did explore some alternative options.
Okay.
And since we're having a hard time finding what we have approved, I think it's still on the table to potentially amend that without maybe single changes, so we can save that money, so.
And so I think one thing that, um, I'd like to maybe have a conversation about, at the end of the day, we're gonna do it takes to support you folks. But at some point, we're gonna have to give it to the professionals.
Oh, yeah.
For design.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and if you guys want to propose options, we can, that just means that much more in design than they have to do to flush it out. And I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think it would be good to be able to have a.
A bike lane.
Discussion with them, because first of all, they don't necessarily ride down here. And the creative aspect of living in this community and seeing how things flow might, we, we might have a special, uh, approach to that, that would not be just based on existing infrastructure. That's where my thought is.
And this goes back to my comment at the very beginning, when we started this and we started the Sheriff's Conversation and we started the addition of bikes and ped to the Parks Commission. I think it would be beneficial to reevaluate the TSB and parks and the ped and have an overall comprehensive plan for the entire town instead of piecemealing pieces. I know we wanna win at the Sheriff's and the Sheriff's is a win and it, it looks like low-hanging fruit. But I think we need a comprehensive overall plan that has the boardwork marked out in red, because this is a big one and that one's gonna be really difficult and that's probably a just seven-year plan to get things through like that. But, you know, and we have some, and then we can identify some of those wins in that. But we need an overall comprehensive plan that dovetails with the safe routes to school, that dovetails with these other projects that we're doing, so it all works together.
I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads. Do you want me to add citywide bike and ped plan updates?
I feel like that is basically a part of safe routes to school. I mean, we have this funding for planning, we just use that.
That is very clear that it is not.
It's not a citywide.
Citywide bike.
No, oh, I agree. But if you're approaching safe routes to school from a mindset of citywide, so it's like a more cohesive thing. And so if we have an overall design in our head, then dovetails with safe routes to school, if that makes sense.
I think we can use, because we have the funding, we got the grant for the safe routes to schools, I think we can use that as a launch point to work with the consultant. Find some grant dollars, so that we can work with the consultant to expand that cover.
Um, exactly. But then next year, you would get a TA grant through ODOT for that citywide bike and ped. They wanted to give us money this year.
Yeah, and so I think that that, I think that that is, should be a priority, because I think that to keep, because it, bikes and ped is incredibly important and it is an integral part of what we're doing, but to be honest, we can't solve it in these little one-hour meetings a month. It's way too complex and it's way too big for that, that's, that's why we're talking about the community group. And so I think that that needs to be a priority, is going after that grant, so that we can do the citywide approach.
So yes or no to add the citywide bike and ped plan on the list?
I would say yes.
Yes. Christina, can I ask you actually to do that?
Yeah, I, I see the safe routes to school as being that piecemeal part, which we don't wanna, really wanna be piecemeal, but it have funding available to do.
We have the funding available to do that for those pieces.
Yes.
And then I think we can bring in the consultant that helps fill in the other parts. So we have those pieces, the safe routes to schools, we have the Cheryl's plan that we've discussed. We have what you guys are working on with ODOT for those pieces. So this is an opportunity to bring all the parties to the table with a consultant that specializes in this industry, bring all the information together, so they can come with a, with a comprehensive plan, then can carve that plan out and go after grants for each piece.
Because every time you plan on each one of these piecemeals, you're spending money out of that fund and it's just.
As, as we all know, it's a lot less expensive to paint your whole house at the same time than it is to paint a shingle a day.
Because we have tons of those plans going back to the eighties, sitting on shelves and they never went anywhere.
Exactly.
But we'll try to do this thing current P S.
So the current T S P, I think, was twenty twenty.
Yeah.
But I think, I'm not gonna, it's very light on the bike and pedestrian infrastructure.
So it, it also includes the, the Empire proposal that was just, just on the Front Street plan. So we have all these little pieces, but I think we need a consultant, the person who specializes it, to bring all these pieces together.
Agreed. I also wanna just point out that I have observed that, uh, you know, of course, the bike ped plan, bikes in general, planning for bikes is something that is obviously coming into focus. And, you know, it's been part of this group's purview for who knows how long, but we haven't been doing that. And so now we have like this massive pile of work that is being laid on your desk. And we realize that that's gonna take a retooling and some like refocusing and it's gonna, it's gonna take a while. And so I think that we've been experiencing a little bit of like gear grinding and I, I think it's totally normal for everybody, staff, to find ways to be able to implement any of these designs or concepts. And so I just would like to have everybody just, um, I'd like to ask for a little bit of, um, empathy towards what you have on your plate and some patience, because I know this is gonna take a little bit for you guys to kind of pick up and deal with. Um, but we're here to help however we can and hopefully we can be supportive and, and make this happen. Uh, because I know it's pretty important to a lot of people in this community, not just the ones that are here today, but thank you all for being here and like sharing that, because we need that push, we need something to be, you know, moving us forward.
And, and not to jump around on our agenda, but because we're speaking so heavily on, on bikes and ped, I think this is, is an opportune time to discuss the bike and pedestrian advisory committee and have that, that discussion before we move on to some of the other projects. Because we have these parts and pieces, it would be nice to have some people that are part of all of these conversations, the safe routes to schools, that you guys are doing, the Cheryl's, each of the pieces, so that when we come to the table, it's just not cold and fresh for everybody. And I can't remember exactly where we left the, what we're allowed and not allowed to.
So do we wanna jump into the?
Yeah, let's jump into that and then we'll dive back into.
Let me, uh, let me sit down here on my.
In, in the balance of whether or not we have to have that, if it's an advisory committee, for instance, that's finding a break in the door.
So I, I had an opportunity to reach out to the city attorney, to kind of talk about some committee, uh, what a committee advisory committee looks like. Um, and, uh, he responded and, and he said that a subcommittee, uh, if, if this group wanted to create a subcommittee, would be, uh, would have to go for a council approval.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we would definitely create a subcommittee, uh, it would be subject to public meeting laws, it would, our staff time, um, in, in, in all of that. Um, and so. there's the subcommittee option. One thing that he did suggest was maybe perhaps instead of having a committee or a community advisory committee, perhaps maybe a committee fact finding uh committee, a community fact finding. And this community fact finding committee brings facts and ideas to this body. There that body would not be subject to public meeting laws. They can't bring recommendations to the bodies, they can only bring facts and ideas. All right, so um, that would be open to the general public if if the volunteer wanted to be that. Commission members could also be part of the community fact finding but once again, they can only present facts to this group.
Would would there be a limit on the number of commissioners that would be allowed to be on the case three?
So I I asked and and there was really no number that he said. But he also said, I asked how big could the group be, what's a manageable group? We got to the committee to establish them, um, so.
And I I see the importance of of a fact finding um committee because there are gonna be meetings with ODOT. I think that there's are gonna be the meetings that you go to and so that there there are the it was beyond the the capabilities of the whole commission being able to go to all these things. So I think that that's important. I don't see that 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 committee making any sort of decisions or anything like that. I mean, um, I just don't see that, but I see that as collecting information and bringing it to us. Um, just like Cricket brings us information uh about the cemetery and many people bring us information, you know, the the park restoration group. So I, that's what I would like to see, um. And you know, and so I think that we we could move forward with taking action on that possibly next week. Um, I think the questions we need to answer is what size we would like it? And and if is there criteria and what criteria would be more for me next meeting?
I see on the Friday update, you had something asking people to be involved. Have you gotten any response back from that?
For the S R T S? We have one application open.
Okay, but you're gonna keep writing it.
It closes. It closes on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay, August.
And and um Christine, um Sylvester is on vacation, so there might have been more than one application submitted some before she left. But we are excited about the one application.
And commissioners should probably apply as well, or should we try and appoint somebody?
Yeah, Jamie.
I thought it was, I thought it was Eric and and
Yeah, we're just putting Jamie on everything.
I, sorry buddy, I I'd like to change that to as me being an alternative.
We'll let you guys break it out, cuz all three of people will be C C.
Carmen Matthews and Jamie Faraday as an alternate.
The way I remembered it.
And it was getting approved.
And you were there, Carmen.
I know, I guess I got sidetracked.
And so I think that the questions are, uh, what is a manageable committee size? I mean, you there, we just, we don't have to worry about odd or even numbers cuz you guys don't get both. So um it's just a size that's manageable to attend um the activities that are going on. And then I think I think that just being, yeah, that's what I'd say.
I think ideally it would be nice, if possible, to reach out to make sure that like inside Empire, you know, people that have different areas in our city are represented on that committee so that they can be included.
So our city manager's office is reaching out to the Empire Coalition.
Okay, absolutely, um.
I and let me, I'll find an email and I'll show tell you guys, everybody that reached out to, guys sent you guys.
But that's okay, I just was saying that we're planning, I think if you have anywhere from eight to ten, because there's gonna be times when people can't show up, that's just a fact. And then you can assign groups of people to do fact finding. And then they can bring that back so that people are working in tandem and it's not also real getting fat funding, cuz that can get hard to pull out.
Yeah, and in in different people, then they're gonna do different areas.
Quick question, funding wise, can the Parks Commission apply for urban renewal funding for infrastructure based on this?
I do not know, we can ask.
And for this, um, what do we call it, this subcommittee?
Not a subcommittee.
Community fact finding. Should should be looking at the T S P that is on to to help tie into I found the T S P helpful because it shows, it's got a lot of good data on it showing which routes have the most accidents for automobiles, pedestrians, bicycles. Um, and it shows the proposed routes and all this sort of thing, so that should be on any any discussion for, I mean, that's
A guiding document.
Guiding document, plug in where we're gonna do.
So my understanding is potentially at our next Parks Commission meeting, he'll take a vote on a ten committee, ten person fact finding bike and pedestrian committee to advise the Parks Commission. Advise, bring data.
Yes, fact finders.
And with a community at large, um, with a preference focused on um community, community members living in a variety of locations within within our city. Right, yeah, you'll write that up pretty.
So, I'm I'm interpreting that this actually is a body in the Parks Commission. It's not a separate citizens advisory on their own.
No, no, yes.
Um, and the only other thing that I would add to that is we need that. And again, this is just working out the details after the fact. I agree with the proposal. I guess that for them to be effective, they really have to be in the loop.
Yeah.
So when when Greg and Jennifer have a project that's coming up and they're gonna tell us about it, those people need to be in the loop right away too, so we have to figure out some way of communicating.
And then it would be kind of a standing update um on our agenda every month that they would have. Maybe on the agenda every month that maybe that group would be on the agenda to provide us updates on on whatever with that. Shall we move on to the, uh, Greg, unless you have something?
What what would you like me to to name this fact finding committee?
Make sure the affermentums are rude, you know, a lot of F's in there.
Based off the name. I would like the uh, the bicycle pedestrian fact finding committee.
How about just B F F?
And we should have pens. Yeah, P P F F, bicycle and pedestrian fact finders. All right, so rolling back up to the goal setting and to your plan, uh, do commissioners have questions about some of the other projects that um, were listed and discussed or other items that that are missing?
Hi.
Or any other projects you'd like to add on?
I I was just gonna say, I thought since I brought some of this up last time, I feel like we don't party. So, um, I thought a bunch of that, yes, and my, just for me purposely, I went through the biggest project and tried to rate them. And I rated them and I gave assigned certain criteria to certain points just for me. And 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 the things I looked at was, as the project already started, something to co-colllect. Um, has the project already been funded or partly funded? Assign so many points to that. Um, to what degree does the project increase accessibility and use of the parks and increase the use of bike and pedestrian vans? Um, uh, how uh urgent is the project? Um, and to look at it negatively, what are the bad outfit, what are the negative outcomes if we don't do it quickly? Um, staff recommendations. And then does it align with city priorities? So when I went through and looked at those projects, those are the kind of criteria that um I looked at. And 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 this is just a general comment, um. You know, when I did that, a lot of the projects that Greg and Jennifer already mentioned are ones that we've started and ones that we either have funded or partially funded. I don't think you can throw that effort away, right? So, um, as I like it, those are things that probably need to be on the priority list. But but I'm hoping that our priority list doesn't come down to just things that we're doing. But rather we are a little bit forward looking to, we maybe have a project or two that we wanna do in the future, cuz we're talking about a two year plan. So, um, and and finally, I know there needs to be some flexibility because things will come up, um, like uh, the grant who made rush and in the park, it just came up on the top of the screen. Uh, certain grants may come available that we aren't even thinking about now and maybe wanna become a priority. And so when I think about flexibility, the other thing I thought about when we're talking about listing projects are okay, not only make it the things we're doing, but maybe one or two things that are forward looking. But also having flexibility, and flexibility means giving staff enough time to not be so overloaded with the projects that they can't do something that comes up that we need right here. So, those are just some general comments.
Do you have um ideas on forward thinking about that?
Well, I think that's for everybody and you know, I hadn't thought about the cemetery, you know, it was not one of our our priorities. Um, and uh, and you know, Greg shows up at all readings and tells us what they're doing and you've done a great job.
And they have funding.
And so, um, no, um, and and you know, I'm gonna digress for a second too, you know, there was a large there was a funding opportunity to get grant money to do the citywide bike and pedestrian path. And we didn't really explore that very much, and I think the biggest reason was cuz staff didn't have time. And so that gets to that flexibility. There there was a good pile of money that was out there to do a citywide plan. Um, and so anyways, that's that's the uh, that's the uh flexibility part, so. That's, that those are just my thoughts and I hope somebody has some great forward thinking projects that we're gonna do, so.
Uh, one of the things I wanted to make and just kind of throw out there is the page that says staff recommendation and I'm gonna focus on existing playgrounds. I think getting into more fundraising opportunities, especially for updating or renovating playground equipment. The safety issues on playgrounds that if we have more focus with maybe like adopt a park, whether the city wants to run that or they wanna spin it off to another organization. I think that's the key that would be helpful for some of the staff recommendation sites on this could be what I'm looking at. And the reason I mention that is looking historically at Marshville and the city of Goose Bay, they have never robustly funded anything in parks. It's always been since the early, I only went back to nineteen twelve. But since nineteen twelve, everything that's been done is either a push with local organizations. The city had the land and a little bit of seed money and then it was grants, whether it was with uh, Perkin Park and the grants for property, uh, the fates with the Paul Bunyan. You know, come shoot an arrow and grow a beard and all that stuff. Lions Club International, twenty twenty, Business Professional Women's, on and on. That's always been the way it worked. Most of the money that the city has through their tax base and when they certainly have more industry was focused on renovations, acquisitions, and business ventures. That's the best way to put it out. So I think keeping that in mind, getting either um, I hate to go through taxing districts because that crushes some other funding that you have, like districts for parks and recreation. But looking at, we've put together in a box a plan called Adopt a Park. But it needs people to go out and get adopters. And I think some of these things over here that have to get done, talking about you don't have recreational immunity, we start already have a playground. You either fix them or you take the equipment out. So that's something to keep in mind when you're doing your planning goals is the fundraising side because the city um, council has talked about that for decades, you know, who are the people? We go back to the sixties and the fifties, the city council was always saying the Lions Club or whoever is the funder and they're doing that as a partner with us, but we don't have the money for it. And I think that we all know that and moving forward with some kind of program like that to get adopters for some of these other things, so that as Kurt said, you don't get a, hi, you have no recreational immunity. Someone just got cut or flew off of a piece of equipment because you didn't maintain it.
Yeah, I think I think that's, and that's part of why it it got some of the the votes up there is is I think under alternative sources of funding and it is expanding the adoptive parks, it is getting donors, it is getting um, looking at other possibilities for funding. I think that that's a crucial point. Otherwise, we get to the point where we have to close stock.
I'd like to see Downtown Association take care of some of these things, so I think they'd be a good organization to um deal with this um funding outreach potentially.
And I did.
Their task with, you know, you know, beautifying our downtown and
Well, I did a test so that, you know, I could bring back data. So the test I had is just me, so Romeo just sent out so many letters. I got five hundred bucks just sending a letter saying, hi, can you, can buddy, can you spare a dime? And that's not allocated for anything, it's sitting in the uh restricted funds for the cabin, I think was what I used. And that was just a letter with stamp and typing and getting permission from the city to use a letterhead. If each person here wanted to send out ten people that they know for something that you have on here, I have stamps and I have letterhead and I just need your name and address so that we're not writing to the same people. But I think that's a way to do that, that there are organizations that are tied in better to the people that have made money off the infrastructure and stuff entering of town and maybe tied in some of these parks and areas or families like the Pocket Parks at Taylor Lawson, et cetera. And that's a missed opportunity, but I think that's something that people here know someone and then you send out a letter and you get some money and then you can go fix the playground or whatever, so you don't overlook that.
Yeah, and I think that's looking back at the the list of things, it's, these these are the tasks that that we acknowledge the city is working on and and I think we need to be forward thinking. And one of the main forward thinking pieces is funding, sustainable funding, which and then how we we look at that.
I was just gonna, I'm focused idea about sending out letters, a library foundation that I'm a customer, sends out an annual appeal letter. We usually do good, we get it money from that. The way we do it is that we have a list of donors that we built up over the years. And we get envelopes for all the, and then everybody in the foundation sits around the table and picks the people they know off of that list and then signs the actual letter as an individual and that way we don't duplicate. And 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 it works, it works really well. There are people that nobody knows, I just sign it.
That's great. Yeah, but forward thinking for me is funding.
Yeah, it is.
Number one focus for me, this four hundred thousand dollars for capital improvement fund is just not enough for the entirety of our city park infrastructure. It's just not enough.
But tying people to the park, so theme with this cabin, the reason I picked that is you have a history of people that are involved in logging that have written books and gone on Stephen Dow Beckman, the the Manashes, the Warehouses, all of those companies. So tying people to the places, that's how the State Parks does it. Is you've gotta personalize it and then as Kurt said, every year you can write out, unlike the library or the Liberty Theater, we're not providing something that you come and watch every time. You're getting a recreational opportunity and then you do your thing. So it has to be done by targeting what you're doing in those particular spaces. So if you have a neighborhood park like Taylor Lawson, that ties into the pride. David Lawson's, if you go into the Mel Scino, you see pictures of that family. So that's just some things, but I can do that right now. If anybody has ten names they wanna give me to send out for something that we're working on now, let me know, cuz I'm sitting here waiting.
Anything you want to capture up there is is this, you are
Yeah, I I would so like for the next two years priorities, not bigger.
That's just biennial. But I don't see it probably putting something. But I don't see it probably putting something that you want to explore because if an opportunity comes up or grants. Or partnering with grants, because we sent you that one for the.
Trails.
Right, that's an opportunity because a lot of the grants we're talking about are biennial grants, they only come open and you get it and it's a two year cycle. And you're the larger grants.
So I thi- I mean, I think the the things that we want to pursue that aren't maybe necessarily on your plate right at the second, but the the citywide. Bike competitive man is that falls into next year and going after the TV grant. Um and I think it's doing the. Alternative funding sources, which is probably going to be honestly another subcommittee of this, a branch of this and having some.
So much person, yeah, they turn in their list and we do.
Yeah, and so moving moving forward with some of those parts and pieces, because uh funding is going to be perpetually an issue that that we have. Are there are there items that with that we discussed and either on the two year planets in the in the packet or. Forward thinking ideas or or something that's glaringly missing like clearly, it's just because you take such big care of it.
We just want to make sure.
Yes, um that, I mean, I I don't want to speak for everyone, but of course, we're going to.
I think tracking the cemetery grants on our grant thing that they have, so we know what we've. Got coming in is a good idea.
Yes.
To have that and that's merely just sending an email to someone so that we get it and we know what's happening, we have a grant writer, we're paying. Some of our money for those grant writers and putting those in there so that we can show the public. A lot of times you get more people interested when you say this is what we've already done, this is the money we have, but we have to match, and that's what I did whenever it was eleven.
Well, I'm interested in the bridge at. Poppets, yeah, it's not a two year thing, but it's been, I got on this commission in two thousand and four. And we've been talking about the bridge that's been out that seriously impacted the traffic at Poppets. And we got really far down the road at one point and.
Well, there's a plan, you've seen it, one with the, you've seen the culverts, et cetera.
It's just the money.
Yes.
When you write a grant for that and it's, it's a lot of money, but it's once it's done, it's done.
Yeah.
Or until it's put down again.
And then I think it's it's important because the more people that we get in that park, the less of the issues that we're going to get to. The empty point of trash all messed up. So I do think it is a priority and I think it is something that if there is a grant that comes up that. Fits some of those park transportation plans, then that's something to look at too, so going back to the flexibility of, that's kind of a specific. Niche item that if we find something that matches that criteria for it.
Right, criteria is, I think, important, but I mean, I. Being a teacher, we use rubrics all the time to figure out how well citizens are doing. And I started jotting down some things here and it's it's much like what Kurt went over. I started with safety, how many citizens groups is it affect, health concerns, is it in progress? Uh is funding available, what is the cost benefit sort of thing? Uh to hit all those other things, then store cultural community values, which obviously has a sort of an intangible thing. People really are concerned about their their ancestors up on the hill. Uh or the the history of our community in in terms of the community.
Right, and you never hear about it till you threaten to tear it down, then everybody calls out your work and wants to burn it down, so.
So I think we need, as things come up, whether it's, you know, the bridge at Swak or new things that's up.
It's not.
Uh, oh, excuse me. Looking into the swan.
It's the it's the bridge that made the short loop, not possible.
Right.
Now you have to go all the way out and so I don't know what the numbers are, but I've been up to at least thirty.
I'll just say, um but we need, do need some sort of process and I know all rubrics have their flaws and. Yes, we rely completely, but there's some budget factors in there, but we do need a way of sort of testing the. How important it is to this to give.
You know, along those lines, since you had your priorities, which aren't quite as good as mine, but. You know, maybe we can agree on the fact that the projects that we're actually working on now. Yep, and or have been partially funded, ought to just be ones that we carry forward. And maybe the criteria that we're talking about, the ones who are you evaluate. These newer projects, the future ones that we want to look at and and see whether or not um they meet that. And meet that that goal, I'm and I'm going to interject here again about the. The Topham Spark Bridge, again, I think I sent something to you and I sent it to Jennifer too. Whether it meets the criteria or not, I don't know, but there is the. Get ready for the next round of funding for off highway paths. And and one of their criteria is to transfer some part to connect another pack. So I guess if you get to stretch, you might be able to say that we're connecting the path. In the park, as far as funding money for the bridge and Topham Spark. And and since I'm finding that memory right now, there there are two other things that are that are coming up. Um on July the eighteenth, unfortunately, the same day, we have a meeting, the uh Safe Route to Schools Advisory Committee is meeting. Um and what might be interesting about that is the discussions seem to be on recommendations from their technical work group. And a presentation on awarded technical services, lessons learned and more. So for the people that are doing the Safe Route to School project at an empire, there might be some information there that they could pick up on, it would be helpful. And in that project out there, um and then the other one is the Oregon Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. ODOT is meeting again July twenty fourth. Um and they're going to discuss innovative mobility program grant criteria, new vulnerable user crash response program. Uh pedestrian and bike audit and more. Again, just from information stuff, and these are the people that we applied to the Fun Street the other year that unfortunately denied the application. Um but uh those are the people that make the recommendation to ODOT for that Fun Street project, so it might be interesting for some to sit down.
So the word and legislative one, did you get that one, that's coming in August?
I did not.
Can we make a determination if we want to add any of the forward thinking projects on here? Or do we want to stick to this list or change something? Because the meeting today, I thought we were going to flesh out, either we like what's on this list or we don't like what's on this list.
And I I think that for me personally, um I'm comfortable because of the criteria, this. Projects that are already started, the things that are we are moving forward with. Um in with the addition of the approach for the citywide bike competitive plan, which I think will alleviate some of the pressure that is on city staff by having. Hopefully grants, so that we can get a consultant that can run those meetings and deal with all the last stuff. So it will relieve some of the pressure there and then alternative funding sources, which is part of the further outreach plan, but I think. Needs to be represented as as a priority and then of course, the continuation of um funding and supporting uh the partners.
Is if you don't put something like that on, that really affects our man possibly instead of says. This isn't a priority to reach out to the city, so do we have? I guess the question I have is, is there anything that we just talked about the last? That is not on those two lists right now that should be on there? I heard long term, I heard getting the. Park that's a pioneer cemetery on there. Um and then this bigger transportation safety plan, that's, is there anything else that should be on there? For right now, I know that things are flexible and things come up.
I've not seen any movement.
Okay, so.
I do have a comment, this is Bev Myers. Can you all hear me? I'm sorry, I cannot attend the meeting today. I'm very concerned about flooding out of the upper end of Mingus Park. That pond two just uh oomph above that red bridge. Has not been dredged since twenty oh two. It's supposed to be twelve feet deep, catch basin, that's why we built it in the eighty four year. Uh to catch all that junk that comes down and if we don't get. Any help to get that pond dredged out to catch anything, not to even worry about all the weeds. That should have been killed, I don't know, in the last ten years. Is that all that floods into the main Mingus Pond. I remember a couple of times it's rained four inches a day and the main Mingus. Road down on Tenth Street is underwater because that little drain isn't working. We need to please put on. Uh the agenda to somehow get that pond, we've had two grants that have come through. That have gone somewhere via the city, thank you very much, I'm very upset. And I don't want. All of Choshy Gardens underwater, there's water coming up on the lantern. Pond that goes over the asphalt to drain into the main creek that goes down into the catch basin. To go into Mingus Pond, so I would like that to be put on the agenda. Because of these drainage issues, I totally understand bicycling, I used to bicycle, we used to have neighbor kids that were. Uh kids to go to schools, but I'm talking flooding here. Because nothing is getting taken care of in the drainage situation situation. Thank you, everybody there.
Thank you, Bev.
Yeah, Bev, this is Coco, on the staff recommendation, we had dre- dredging of Mingus Pond. Shouldn't there be two ponds listed and not just one?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're asking that we have the catch basin plus the bigger Mingus Pond.
But there's no place to put, okay, we built that little pond. That is right above the red bridge, above the little cement dam. That is a catch basin, it's supposed to be twelve, twelve feet deep. And we used to, the rule when we made it in about eighty five or six. It was supposed to be dredged out every four or five years and it was dredged out way back in the late nineties. But has not been, and that's why the ducks are dragging their stomachs on that mud.
Thank you, Bev, are there any provisions for um emergency flooding dredging? Starting out then, that that bypassed some of the planned maintenance?
So Greg and I met with ODFNW. Um they, fun fun thing, they want to put a fishing gear out at Empire Lakes. And they're one hundred percent funding it, but that's not going to happen until next year. But we did take the opportunity to talk about the pond, we always try to do it for the record. Um and because when we approached them, like right when we first, we first kind of took over the parks. Yeah, a couple of years ago. Um they they had this special type of dredging that they were only permitting, they don't permit anything else. And so, but they said a pilot project was being done somewhere in Eastern Oregon.
Yep.
So we took the opportunity, when we met with them last month, to talk to them, where are we, how can we. How can we move forward with Mingus Pond, they told us that that pilot program um was a whole due to costs.
Yep.
But they did say that the program that Mingus Park dredging project would fall under is opening up next, beginning of next year.
Next year.
So beginning of next year, so it's on our radar, we're just waiting for ODFNW to open it up. Um.
And by open it up, you mean they are opening up a funding source for.
Funding source.
For them to come or some specialty company?
For them to fund or they're. Funding it and then you put it out. Yeah, so we'd have to, we'd have, I mean, we're pretty much have to play by their rules, but I mean, that's fine. If 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 they're gonna, if they're gonna dredge it, but it, we're getting the feeling it's going to be spending, but we don't know anything right now, it's not going to stop us.
So it's it's the suction dredging.
It's my understanding is they wanted to do the, like, I'm using the term suction, maybe there's a different term out there that is more appropriate, but. They they don't want to use regular shovel.
Yeah, they don't.
That methodology of dredging. Uh because what it does, the turbidity in the water is just so great because it's just disturbs a lot and buck. Uh so much, the first suction dredging, which is, you know, it's like the vacuum. Um and sucks that little sediment up right there, uh so.
So the, so.
Yeah, like gold mining.
Okay.
I don't do that.
It's a reverse dredger.
We know the process and then is it possible to get a quote on, so we know when that grant opens up on how much it's going to cost? From a company? I mean.
It's, I I would, I would. Yes and no, the yes part would say, yeah, we can call up somebody that does this type of work, we don't know if that that type of work is going to have. That they may help either, so we can get a quote, say that it may cost this much, but they might have a different specification. Uh what we require, we have a requirement with.
Are we talking a hundred thousand dollars or are we talking six hundred thousand dollars?
Probably more. I think the number that I, that when we looked at this back, I think it was in the. One point eight to two point five million dollar. Mark for dredging because.
But that's dredging the big ponds as well.
That was, yes.
And I think the whole pond we thought is, it is no good not to do both ponds, I I get that it just says pond on this list. It's the.
It's it's the waterway.
It's the upstream catch, um sediment catch pond and as well as the downstream.
And and again, I have a team, um ODIFNW has jurisdiction there, because.
Well, they don't have, they don't, they don't issue the permits, they're just a public agency, they're the.
So what you're telling me is that it's not, that they would stop us from doing it, but they wouldn't give us any funding if we did it anyway, other than where they might be.
Well, they'll be by the tar promise and they will consult with ODFNW. And so ODFNW will have a say and I've never, I've never not heard the Army Corps or DSL not. Not take a consultation or go against a consultation of ODFNW. And we have the history of the very first WPA project in nineteen thirty five, when that program started under FDR's alphabet soup. That was the first thing that Marshfield got eighteen thousand and ninety five dollars for, because previously. At the top of Mingus Park, which all of that was acquired off fourteen, that was a reservoir. People, you know how it comes down off the hill on fourteen, they were putting water in there as a reservoir. And they worked for three or four years just recontouring. And where the Mingus Park Community Cabin is now, you could actually see what they call the lake. You can't see it from there now, if you took all the trees down and stood there, you wouldn't see anything because it's been recontoured over the decades. And it is a lot of water that comes from creeks that are established. As watershed, so you have to consult with DEQ and ODFNW. And I think when they did Shore Acres, they had BLM come in and they used a pumper truck. They removed and that's a lot smaller, but there's a dam that has a creek that feeds that. So they went up and dammed Louis Simpson's old dam up there that they had electricity from, and then we would do it in the dry part of summer. We'd have to suck everything out with their truck and then we have to have a permit to dump it.
So, because I I think the question is, is we need to be prepared for that grant because if we go two more winters, the ponds won't be usable. Um so I I think the the priority is both with Bev and everybody here, that's is to get. As prepared for that grant as possible and then also in that process to figure out. What is the maintenance schedule that we need to do so that it is a two hundred thousand dollar bill every year, every other year instead of.
I'm pretty sure that ODFNW, if they're going to grant us that money, they're going to ensure that we have a maintenance.
Yeah.
Yep. Would it all help with the the process of getting a grant for the dredging? To have a concurrent grant to do re-trail building, that that would get less. Or other practices upstream, up in the watershed that will reduce the amount of. Contributed, instead of, right now, as I pointed out before, all the trails are. Fall line, non-con, and fall line trails are horrible for sedimentation.
Jamie, it's an easy answer, yes, of course it would help.
Yeah.
It's just all about funding.
Yeah.
Right, but.
Yes, of course.
There are fairly inexpensive uh groups out there that can do the work on the on the ground as well as. As uh as something.
And I think that's something when we advertise this successful acceptance of the grant, because ODFNW is going to give it to us. Um then we can look at some of those other projects that need to be done to help prevent that in the future.
Coming due, isn't it? The one, ODFNW? No, the one for the trails, that grant comes due again, that's that two year watershed, the.
I I am not prepared to answer that question.
Yeah, there's a watershed grant, Jamie, that talks about trails and. Yeah, there's a watershed grant, Jamie, that talks about trails and mitigating what you're talking about. It's a two-year cycle and that cycle is coming up again, I think either this fall or the spring. But it's helpful if park commissioners get data and information ahead of time so that you can have an idea. And then you look at the criteria for the grant, it's online, so I can give that information, yeah.
Any other additional commissioner comments in regard to the two-year plan? Thank you Coco for pushing forward on that. I think the items that we discussed today that are in addition, that we're in agreement are, are priorities as well, as long as.
Are the items up there?
Right up on the board.
Those two.
And, and the cemetery.
And the cemetery.
Continuing to support the amazing efforts of the cemetery.
Yeah, because, you know, the one thing that I did use in my criteria is some teams require a lot of staff effort or, or park commission effort. Some don't require very much. They do set the stuff themselves and so it being a priority.
They're in progress.
Yeah, really doesn't affect us much.
Good cost benefit.
Good cost benefit, I like, that was one of yours, yeah.
But the cemetery is in progress and they had come to us and told us the phases of this project. So they would be considered on the in-progress side.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, any, any.
No, you've got to suffer with everybody else.
Thank you.
Additional, we're, we're going to wrap this, sorry, and then, and then we'll talk after. Um, so any other additional parks commissioner comments or questions?
If we're wrapping the meeting, I gave everybody a handout, we have fundraiser that's pending approval of a. City of Kusby permit. And so if you want to look that over, it's on the twenty-fourth of August and it's a leave no trace event. It'll be in John Poppets Park and we have people that are going to partner with us. So, um, that's to redo the trails and my little cohorts.
The trail markers.
Yeah, the trail markers and then also the dog strut thing. So we have the soulmates, the, um, park pack and friends of Kus County Animals online to help us with that. And when I say leave no trace, that means no, we're not going to have the root beer, we're not going to have this or that. It's, we're coming there, it's two hours. The first half is the park pack, the adopted park people, whatever, will be doing walks through the park. So people get familiar that there is a trail system, nobody's jumping out of the bushes and stabbing or anything nefarious. And the second part is a strut with dogs that will be on a leash, et cetera, so that they can, um. Sign up and it's ten dollars suggested donation and that's additional funding. So we have two ways, number one, money that just goes into topics for the trail. Number two is adopters to adopt one of those markers. And we'll get a price of, this is the amount, it goes into the city's dedicated funds and we get them right up. Okay, so.
Thank you for that. All right, thank you, um, any, any additional comments? Now we'll wrap this up. Thank you so much for coming in today, I appreciate it. And I feel like we've made some positive progress and we'll see you next week or four o'clock.
Next week at four o'clock.